Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is not back in session. We're going to the public hearing. Michael, would you give some?
Before Attorney Shulman gets in and explains the actual, the public hearing that we're having, I just want to remind everyone once again, trust the old clock up on the wall. We use the same rules, basically, three minutes for individuals, five minutes for anyone that represents an entity or group, but that's the only person that can speak to represent that entity or group, alright? And I'll turn it over to Attorney Shulman.
Chairman, the first action of the board was for the chairman to recess the meeting of the county commission and then reconvene the meeting of the local planning agency, which also consists of the county commissioners.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is not in recess. Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is not in session for the public hearing.
As the local planning agency?
As the local planning agency.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, I have laid out an agenda. I'm sometimes notorious for not necessarily following that agenda, so if I skip over something, but you want to have questions that, or you have questions you want to answer, then please pull me back. But this is a meeting of the local planning agency to consider an ordinance of Franklin County, Florida, amending the St. George Island corridor overlay district by removing the prohibition against single-family residential uses on the first floor for property located within a 2,100-foot radius of the center point of the intersection of Franklin Boulevard and Gulf Beach Drive on St. George Island, Florida, as described in Plan Book Two, Page Seven, Franklin County, Florida, excluding the area east of the east boundary of Third Street East and west of the west boundary of Third Street West, providing for exemptions, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. And Mike, I can jump ahead of myself a little bit. Would you go back to that actual overlay map first and then come back to this one? Yes, commissioners, that is the overlay map of the area that I just described to you, and it runs from the Apalachicola Bay on the north to the Gulf of Mexico on the south. As you can see, that 2,100-foot radius extends beyond Third Street East and Third Street West, which is why we have the more specific description that I gave to you. And Mike, if you now pull up the color map, this color map will show you the, in more detail, the actual area of the business district, as it's called, on St. George Island. And the purpose of this particular ordinance, commissioners, is to give the board an opportunity to address the following issue. There are approximately 302 C-4-zoned lots, whether they're built or vacant, that's the total number, 302 of the C-4 lots within that business district. If you will look on the map, you will see some blue-colored lots. That represents some, the developed units within the business district, which have what we refer to as residential units, because they have no commercial use. They're essentially used purely residential, and essentially they're rental units on the island. That yellow area in the lower left-hand corner is the Villas of St. George. That is just put there more for informational purposes. It really isn't relevant either to the ordinance that's before you today, but it is within the overlay area, and it is subject to the overlay requirements. When the board adopted the overlay ordinance in 2018, it included a prohibition, for the first time, disallowing, not allowing, residential uses on the first floor of any property within the business district. There was some concern expressed by those who had both built units and also vacant land, that their property rights had been adversely impacted. Without, you know, getting into any of the technical arguments in terms of defending the county's actions, the board's directions to me was to bring back to you in a format where you could consider potentially amending the overlay district to allow, once again, for residential uses on the first floor of the C-4-zoned properties within the business district. The way I've drafted this ordinance is it gives you the opportunity to make that change throughout the entire district area, for the entire, the 302 lots I described to you earlier that are C-4-zoned. So the ordinance as written would allow the board, if it's adopted as written, to remove that prohibition against residential use on the first floor throughout the entirety of the business district. If the board chooses to do that, or something less, you're in a procedural position where you could just, for example, there's been some discussion about, to use the non-technical phrase, grandfathering the C-4 residential units that have been developed and then leave the restriction for the undeveloped lots. You certainly have that authority, but my recommendation to you, and the recommendation from the planner, is that you adopt the ordinance as written, essentially returning all of the C-4-zoned units back to what they were allowed to do prior to the overlay ordinance in 2018. The restrictions on your C-4-zoned ordinance is the property owner has the discretion. They can have a commercial on the first floor and a residential up top if they want to. They can have pure residential, or they can have a pure commercial. And that's generally the summary of where we are, how we got here, and what this ordinance allows you to do. Does the board have any questions for me before I proceed with asking for public comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Mr. Shulman, as you state here in your second, second paragraph, it says that presently there are 200, 302 such lots, of which approximately 50 have C-4 residential structure. Now, it's been brought to my attention by some of these lot owners in that commercial area, that they were all zoned C-4, but to have the ability, as you just stated, to do business with the residents above, do residential, or do strictly commercial. Now, a lot of them have come to me and said, you know, if you take away my C-4 zoning, really and truly, what right does the county have to take away my C-4 zoning? Because that, the property values, it raised the property values that they paid for the current lots that they own. And if you take away that use, then it devalues their property. That's some of their concerns. But I'd like to state, there was no, there was at least four of us that were not on this board when these properties were zoned to C-4. They're already zoned to C-4. It ain't like these people are asking for C-4, they already have it.
Correct.
And they're saying if we take away their C-4 zoning, then we're going to devalue their property. Now, some of them also tell me they're willing to sell. If you pay them what they paid for these lots, based on that increased value when it had, when you added res, when the former board added residential uses to it, then they're willing to sell. But as I told them, the county don't have the money to go in there, in intimate domain, and buy these, these 252 lots that are left over that have not been built on yet. So that's what we're dealing with, just for the public's knowledge, that we're not zoned at C-4. It's already been done that way 15 years ago or so.
Long time.
Long before I got here. And these are the concerns that I'm hearing from some of the property owners over there, that the county would actually be devaluing their property values and what they paid for these lots, because of that increased value when, when they were zoned to C-4, that included residential uses. So that's kind of, you know, that's kind of what I've been told by some of the property owners within that overlay district. Some of them probably done and bought it as it was C-4, too.
Well, I don't know who bought what.
I was saying. How many lots, another question, how many lots are in this overlay district? There's 302 of them have been zoned C-4. How many actual lots are there? Are there any lots that are still C-2?
Yes, my, my count is 224 C-2-zoned lots and 302 C-4-zoned lots. There are also some C-3-zoned lots that you could add to that, and there's about, I guess, 11 or so, to say a baker's dozen of C-3-zoned lots there. But Commissioner, you are correct in terms of the evolution of how the C-4 zoning occurred within the, the business district. I mean, it all occurred hand in glove with various real estate booms and busts that we have had. I mean, when property values go up, the market forces, people would come in, in the, you know, it was the, I guess, 93, 94, 95, then we had a downturn, then we had a little uptick in the late 90s, and everybody knows the huge bubble that hit in the early 2000s and petered out in 2006. Most of these C-4 zoning changes occurred during that, that cycle, from the late 80s up until around 2006 or so. I mean, we could look at the record, it will speak for itself, there may have been some rezonings that occurred, you know, after the big real estate bust in 2006, but for the, I think for the substantial majority of it occurred prior to 2006.
Well, Michael, why was they, why some of them C-3, C-2, why was they all wasn't in C-4 in that area?
Different property owners wanted different uses, is the only explanation I would have, Commissioner Massey. Most people in looking at the market were deciding that, you know, the transient rental market was where the money lay in getting, you know, the return on their investment. A lot of it got kick-started with the original skinny minis in the early 90s, where the county had said, "We don't want skinny minis, or we don't want that type of development." Actually, I think it was a multifamily that was proposed, and the county opposed it, and there was some litigation that the county lost, and the county was ordered, it's that bottom right-hand side, closest to where the pencil is on, on the map, over in that, no, further to, yes, over in that area. Those were the original skinny minis that were the result, the result of a lawsuit that the county was required to allow those units to be built, and that just sort of, when people saw that, and they saw the, the return on investment, I mean, people being entrepreneurs, they wanted to develop their property in a similar fashion.
I got you. I don't live over there. I don't like skinny minis, anyway.
Well, my father had an interesting name for it, so they're, they're too small to be shotgun houses, they're BB guns, but...
They covered the whole beach up.
But, but as Attorney said, the judge ordered that we must grant it. It wouldn't, and that's where it all started, and started snowballing. But in fear of going through litigation again, and being told by the judge again, you got to allow it. So that's kind of where it all started.
Well, keep in mind, the, the overlay district, as it was originally written, was imposing essentially a, a design criteria that was developed in conjunction with the community in multiple public hearings. And if the board were to adopt this ordinance, as, as being recommended to you to be adopted, all of the units in that overlay district would still be subject to the overlay requirements. They, they, we're not talking about exempting the units from those requirements, but that would be determined on a case-by-case basis by your county planner, as he would receive development applications for units within the overlay district area. Any further questions from the board for me before we open up public comment?
I'm with the people, that's our property.
Alright, well, Mr. Chairman, that would be an appropriate time for the board to receive public comment.
Okay, you got, if you're in the business, you got three minutes. If you're speaking for a group, you'll have five public comments.
Mason Bean, St. George, I appreciate the opportunity. I know you guys have good intentions, and, but you're also the gatekeeper to protect this, this very fragile space we have. Nobody's trying to take the C-4 away, and nobody wants to take anybody's property rights away. Our concern is the strictly, totally residential that's going to cover up the rest of our commercial district, and in 20 years from now, we're going to need commercial things. You've got to have a vision that we can protect the integrity of that commercial district. So if you're already zoned C-4, let me offer a solution. If you're already zoned C-4, you have the right to, to keep that residential use. If you're stuck between an existing homes, then that makes sense to be the home. But what I would like to see is a common drain field that these commercial lots could pump, they could treat their water, and then pump to a common drain field. You've got lots of right-of-way from Third Street East to Third Street West. So investor wouldn't have to necessarily buy extra land. The investor, whoever, the drain field, he would have to pay for, whatever his tie-in would be, but he wouldn't have to buy extra land. So then, the original C-2 allowed, was restricted residential, but, but it was a common wall. They wanted a downtown. They wanted to look like Appalachia Cola downtown, and I hope that we can somehow eventually get back to that. So keep the C-4, just strike out that total residential in the wording, and I think we're okay with that. Thank you.
Alan Pfeiffer, Concerned Citizens, Franklin County. I just heard, I just want clarification, this should be quick. When you say business district, is that the same, is that the same as the St. George Island overlay? Are they the same exact things?
Yes, it's the, technically, it's the, the description that I gave at the beginning when I read the caption of the ordinance, but generally speaking, it is known commonly as the area between Third Street East, Third Street West, going from the bay to the Gulf. That's generally what's known, in my mind, as the business district on St. George Island.
So all structures that are in the St. George Island overlay are on this display we're seeing right here?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Well, we'd have to go back to the, because there's actually some land on the, the north side. Mike, if you'll go back to the other map. This is essentially the, the C-4 zone areas that we're talking about, to give it more detail. That technically is the area, you see that center point of Franklin Boulevard and Gulf Shore Drive?
Yes.
It's a 2,100-foot radius from that point is the overlay district, excluding the areas of the east boundary of Third Street East and the west boundary of Third Street West. But it would technically include areas that are outside the map that you were just looking at. For example, you see the area that's north of, on the St. George Sound side of the road network, within the overlay area. The areas south of the intersection of Franklin Boulevard and West Gulf Beach Drive, or Gulf Beach Drive, going towards the Gulf, that is technically part of the overlay area, but it is not included within that, that larger blow-up map that I was just displaying.
So there are, if you use the highlighter, there are some additional platted lots that are also...
No, all the platted lots are shown on the map.
Thank you very much.
And that's why the, the map is being shown as it is.
Public comment?
I actually have some copies of the proposal we had for each of, they may have already got, I'm not sure. My name is John, I'm actually the president of the Business Association, Civic Club member, and also owner of the Beach Pit Restaurant.
I'm sorry, I want to make sure I give them everything that's, is it just this one page or is it two pages?
No, it's faulty, it's faulty. One is just a copy of the, so here's, there's five of them.
Okay, very good. It was two pages to each handout for each commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Sorry for the interruption, sir.
That's okay. I appreciate the time you guys have given us. I represent the Business Association. I have spoke with a lot of the local residents of St. George Island and Franklin County, for that matter. And I think we're all in the agreeance of not trying to take away personal rights of people's property. I think what we're all in is the best interest is for the community itself as a business district. One of the things that, that most cities thrive from is a business area in your community. Being we're five miles off the coast, the business district is a very important part of St. George Island to the many residents and tourists that come there on a weekly, monthly, yearly basis. I, I think we can all come to an agreement of, again, business is extremely important. When you cross over the bridge to Appalachia Cola, one of the first things you see is the beautiful downtown district with businesses, shops, restaurants, gas stations, banks, which provides and enhance the community as a whole. When you drive over to St. George Island, when you get to the High Hump, one of the first things you see is the beautiful St. George Island lighthouse that sits there. When you look to the east, you see a row of the skinny minis, as they're calling them, and that is one thing that is obstructing the views of our beautiful beach. When you look to the west, you have a lot of the businesses that are currently there, with the exception of a few homes that are currently built, built there. And it is one of the things that St. George Island is known for, in its beauty of the beach and the island of itself. So taking away that aesthetic of the Business Association will essentially push, hopefully not, some of the businesses out, when you have rows and rows and streets of these same type homes, capability of being built, First Street, Second Street, Street, Third Street, even on the bay, as you come across the bridge, you're seeing the front, the backside of the homes that you're going to see on the bayside, and that's exactly the aesthetics that you potentially can see coming across the bridge. As a group, we are concerned that this will hurt some of the business, obviously not in the near future, but in the long future, to keep maintaining what we have, and for further businesses to come aboard. We understand that there are some issues with some of the landowners, some of the existing building owners. We understand that we are not here to take away their rights. We are in agreeance from the Business Association that potentially some kind of agreement can come about of grandfathering in, or however it is that we, you guys may decide that, to give them their opportunity to rebuild in case something, 51% or more damaged their home, so that way it's not taking away the rights. We're, we're for that. And the possibility of some existing lots that are between other skinny minis now, because that is already done, that's not going to change anything for the future, so we're okay with that. Some of the things with the business not coming in is just getting a little bit too hard to bring in new businesses to St. George Island. Some of the rules, regulations, and statuses that are in place now are a little challenging for new business to come, and that's why a lot of these lots are sitting empty. For example, when I bought my business 10 years ago, one of the things they told me was, I was only going to have the capability of having 38 seats in my current 150-seated restaurant, because of the septic system. Ended up having to go to the state, got a variance to keep what we currently had that had been working for over 20 years. They gave us two years, with the exception of Collins had to come in and certify our septic, had to maintain it, had to make sure that the testing was correct, make sure that it was capable of handling the 150 seats. After two years of going through that process, it came to the conclusion that that restaurant was capable of holding 150 seats with the aerobic system that was currently there. Collins actually told me that I was probably under capacity of what I did need. My busiest season, five months out of the month, the system that I had there was more than capable of handling my restaurant business. So I think some of the ordinance may need to be taken a little look at to help some more businesses come in. Things like that are things that we can take a look at, parking, other things, to help us bring more businesses into the community that will actually buy these lots from these people that are willing to sell. Again, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Excuse me, what's your last name for the record, sir?
Cadriel, C-A-D-R-I-E-L.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Julie Collins. I'm speaking on my, by, by, by myself. I'm speaking as a resident and as a business owner on St. George Island. I have lived on St. George Island for about six years. Before that, I vacationed there with my family for over 20 years. The reason I brought my family to St. George Island was because of how beautiful it is and how about it is not built up like Panama City. You can see the beaches, you come over that island, it has a completely different feel and look, and that's what we want to preserve on that island. We want to have the families, we want to have people bringing their children that can walk on the sidewalks. I don't want to have a community where you have walls of small houses, and again, it may not happen immediately, but that's exactly what's going to happen if you allow these single-family homes. People are going to start selling it off to build these tall skinny mini houses to try to make their little bit of more profit off of that property. One thing that was brought up by the, the council is that, you know, they had this zoning in the past, and we don't want to take away their rights. 30 years ago is not the island that's here today. The zoning needs to change. That's what, that's what we would hope that you would do over time. Back 30 years ago, you could buy a residential lot, and they gave you a business lot that was 25 feet. It was free. Things change. Things evolve. I can promise you that 30 years ago, nobody thought that they were going to build a row of skinny mini houses down the front of the beach and block it. They didn't think that it was probably even possible to build a house like that. It happens. But as our government, as our gateway, basically, to protect our environment, this is exactly what you're supposed to do. This is what communities all over the United States do. This is what you do, you change zoning. You accommodate miscalculations, where things happen that you didn't expect to happen. You accommodate growing business. You accommodate those things for the overall community, not one landowner. They're not going to lose value in their property. That lot's going to be even more valuable as the businesses increase in that district, right? I agree with John. I think that, that businesses can be brought in. If you go to Key West, if you go to Marathon, Isla Marada, they have businesses everywhere that are living on little bitty pieces of land. There's advanced technology available. We don't need parking on the island. People are walking, people are riding bikes. So maybe we come together with a solution to make, make that, that land more valuable based on bringing a business in, rather than a residential house, and make that a really nice walking community for our, our environment. I think that's the way to go. And we would love to, as a community, come together with you guys to try to figure out how to do that. How do we bring in the more businesses? How do we increase the value? I think that times have changed, and we just don't want the island to change into something like Panama City. So we are asking you to help be that gateway, be that person, be those people that help preserve that environment for us, and for all the people that we bring here on vacation. Thank you.
As for commissioners here, I think we've been over 100 years in Franklin County. We've seen that island, where it wasn't up to stick of pears and sandspurs.
Yeah.
50-something years ago.
Yes.
Yeah, I've been going on that island over 50 years.
And we want to keep it the way that it feels. We don't want it to be like Panama City. If you go down, you know the skinny minis, if you stand in front of them, you can't even see the beach.
Right.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Jim Morris. I'm the current president of the St. George Island Civic Club. Hopefully you received a copy of my comments, I emailed them to you yesterday. Civic Club's been an organization in existence for almost 50 years now, and we're approaching, as of today, a membership of nearly 600 people. Annually, we raise funds for local nonprofits and charities, and we provide willing volunteers for nearly every, every Franklin County organization or, or event that seeks our help. Our primary objective is to provide leadership regarding improvements to the island and to protect its welfare. And it's because of that mission that the Civic Club supports and appreciates the 2018 commercial district overlay. We love the current ordinance because its purpose is consistent with, with ours, which is to maintain the island as a unique, attractive, vibrant, and economically prosperous community. We agree with its stated justification that its adoption was, quote, "necessary to protect the unique character of the island and the reasonable development expectations of property owners." It is because of the 2018 ordinance, 2018 ordinance, that the Civic Club Board was inspired to create the St. George Island 2025 Vision, which was a consensus list of capital improvement projects for the long term. And we are grateful for the partnership that you have afforded us for the good of the island and the county. An example of that is our mutual cooperation, working together in the FDOT beautification grant, which is for Franklin Boulevard, which is currently ongoing. Another major capital improvement project is the Restore Grant for Storm Water Management. We've worked hand in hand with you on that. A modest project is where the Civic Club is providing equipment and signage for the basketball and pickleball court that you, the county, have recently resurfaced. In short, we sincerely appreciate what you do, and we appreciate that you have listened to our request. And today, I'm asking you to listen to us again. The Civic Club Board urges you to defeat the proposed ordinance that will remove the prohibition against single-family residential development within the commercial district. We recognize that your verbal... We recognize that your verbal comments do not have the same effects, effect as your written words, but in previous commission meetings, several of you stated your intent is to protect the property rights of individuals who owned zone property before the 2018 ordinance was enacted and changed possible usage such as single-family homes. It is in your official minutes that you stated that you wanted to treat everyone fairly. Quote, "Everyone should have the same rights, and just because they haven't built anything yet does not mean they should not be able, be allowed to build it." Unfortunately, while this is an admirable and worthy sentiment, the effect will potentially destroy the 2018 overlay. And let me explain, I provided a copy of the relevant sections of the overlay for your convenience in following our argument. It appears the proposed ordinance protects the property rights of people who want to build a rental house, but not the property rights of those who want to build other things that were also previously allowed before the 2018 overlay. And those uses were such as automotive and engine repair, adult entertainment centers, commercial boat storage, billboards, telecommunications towers, RV parks, and other uses no longer available for property owners. A similar problem is created by removing single-family residences from the standards of the development section. If we are reading this correctly, "Commercial businesses cannot place their garbage waste containers on the public road, have animated signs, or lighting over 15 feet high. They must provide adequate landscaping and enclosures around their mechanical equipment and outdoor supplies in order to make..." Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning Commissioners. My name's Stephen Rash. I own 17, I think about 17, commercial lots on St. George Island. Some of them I've owned for over 30, well, no, not that long, 20-something years. And most of the lots are Zone C4. Back in 2005, about the peak of the real estate market, unfortunately, I bought some lots across the street from the Blue Parrot with the restaurant, The Islander, on it, contingent on it being rezoned C4. And it was rezoned C4, and I bought it. So, you know, I want to maintain the C4 zoning on my lots with all the rights and privileges that C4 defines, and I don't want to give that up. I don't have any intentions of building residence, but if, you know, whatever the future brings, I don't know, and, you know, I don't want to give up that option. I'll fight for that option. One of the biggest problems on the island as far as attracting businesses, there's no central sewer system, parking to come in and put a business in there and conform with the sewer laws, parking, stormwater runoff setbacks, all those make it very difficult, very high barrier to come in and start a business. And so the best thing that could be done to support the business district is to put some form of central sewer system, public sewer system there, so that each individual business doesn't have to provide his own sewer system with all the property that that requires. And I've supported that for a long time, but just changing the zoning is not going to make businesses come in. Might devalue the property maybe 50% or so. I don't know what would devalue my property, and, you know, I would, you know, I wouldn't, I would talk to my lawyer about who's responsible for that if my property is rezoned out from underneath me. As far as, you know, as far as the island, I've been there 30-something years, and I love it. I love the way it was 30 years ago. You know, there was no plantation. We used to drive down an old trail down the cut and go fishing. You know, I could, I could go on and on about how the island used to be. And, you know, it kind of, I just kind of chuckle when I hear people that moved here, you know, five or 10 years ago, that say they want to keep it, you know, now that they're here, they want to keep it how it is, you know? So the island's changing all the time, more and more people are coming, and the island does need planning, and the business district is very important, but taking people's property rights in the way going about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Pat O'Connell. My husband, Michael, I have been on the island for some 20-something years too, so we've been around a while also. I want to reiterate that if, if you can't take away, so to speak, the C4, then you can't take away an auto repair shop or a billboard or any of those other things. You can't take away the C2 if you can't take away the C4. And I didn't understand, I don't guess any of us understood, that the county commissioner is powerless to make any changes in the previously made decisions. So I think that's a big issue we need to look at. Secondly, you can't impose constraints on the appearances and the conditions and the standards. If you can't do it on everybody, then you can't put it on anybody. Finally, in all the years we've been here and all the work we've done with the commission, I have never seen the commission do the level, consider doing the level of density that you are proposing for that right there. We will have over 400 residential properties in less than 70 acres. I've been here many meetings when you denied people for having four houses on less than an acre, and now you're talking about putting up to 400. Nobody can say that those houses aren't going to be built if you let this continue. The overlay you did in 2018 was for a very big purpose. Forget about the preservation of the island, it was to make the island desirable going forward. It was a good idea then, it's a good idea now. Please defeat this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
Angela Troy, St. George Island. If I'm correct, County Schuler, County Schuler, you wanted to propose that they remove this, which is dealing with C4 only. Is it dealing with C2 as well? Okay. It is only C4, and the people that have spoken for doing away with this and a couple of the others have said, you don't want to take away our property rights that currently have C4 prior to this 2018. So we're just requesting, as Mr. Schuler did, that you remove the prohibition on the C4. If you have C2, you want to try and get C4, you have to go through everything else that you normally do. But if you currently have C4, it's all we're asking, is we keep it the way that it was before so we can build on it, because that's why we got our property changed to C4, or requested C4, so we could do what was promised that we could do at the time when we had it changed. And that's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Public comment?
All right.
Public comment? Well, we threw away the public comment, nobody come up, Mr. Schuler, so we'll go.
Mr. Chairman, it appears the public comment for this meeting of the county commission acting as the local planning agency is concluded. Now is the time for Commissioners, if you choose to have a conversation among yourselves with any questions or discussions that you want to have among yourselves, or if you have any questions for myself, I'm certainly here to answer as best I can any questions you may have. If you have no questions of further discussion, then your next step would be to close this meeting of the local planning agency and then reconvene as the county commission during that public hearing of the county commission on this ordinance that we have been discussing. You would then be in a procedural position to make a decision whether to approve or deny the ordinance as written or consider some lesser option, which has been discussed, which is simply to limit the prohibition of residential use of the first floor to those units that have already been developed and constructed within the C4-zoned properties. So with that, does the board have any questions for me?
Commissioners, discussion? I got some. You know, Commissioners, sometime they change every year. I mean, every term, sometime they change. But that don't necessarily, that don't mean that whatever they voted for, the previous commission voted for, it don't, it don't automatic change when it was a law, right? I mean, when they, when you vote so many passes, I thought it'd become a law with the commission. And that is a later one?
No, you are correct, Mr. Chairman. The ordinance remains in place unless and until it is invalidated by court or there is a new adopted ordinance by the county commission. But the county does have the ability pursuant to law and, you know, whatever the particular voting requirements are of whatever statute we're looking at. In this case, the board has the authority to amend the ordinance by a simple majority vote of the board.
So... I mean, people gonna, you got new people gonna come in and out. And every time you see, I done heard it for 16 years, we want it to stay like it is. People buy property, a lot of people buy property to invest, and they not gonna, it might stay like that 20 years, might stay like that for a date, according to whatever kind of move they want to make. But it's not right for them people not to be able to do what they intend to do within the law with their property. I've been owning property, I don't own no property on the island, but I own property in, in Applejack. And I don't want nobody coming, telling me what I can do with my property. I mean, it ain't, I don't think it right. So I'm gonna go with what the law say. What if they had it before, you can't take it from them. That's one Commissioner's opinion, or if you...
Well, Mr. Chairman, if there is further discussion among the board, that's entirely at the discretion of the board. If y'all have no further discussion among yourselves, Mr. Chairman, you would be in a procedural position to close the meeting of the local planning agency and reconvene the county commission, and then we will conduct the final public hearing on this ordinance, and then the board will be in a position, you would, once again, take public comment if there is any further public comment, and then you would vote.
All right. Any more Commissioner got anything? Okay, well, I guess we'll...
Are we thinking that there are certain residences that are simply purely residential? And we're thinking of carving those out and leaving them to be residential, insurable, purely residential, and have no confusion that they're anything else but residential? Is there an option just for that to give them relief?
Yes, Commissioner Bolt, the ordinance as it's written covers all of the C4-zoned properties within the overlay district, but the board certainly has the authority to carve out a provision that says only the existing C4-built residential units, as we've described them, would be exempted from the overlay ordinance prohibition. And all the other overlay ordinance prohibitions or design requirements and things would still apply, but they would still be allowed to rebuild their units and have residential on the first and second floor if they choose to. If, in fact, the board wanted to limit the effect of the ordinance to just those built C4 residential units.
I think that statement is what triggered this entire process, right there.
I don't know what to do. I do know if this kind of Commissioners get up there and say they want their house on that island painted blue, this room will fill up and they'll run us out of here. I know that. Why, why we, they want us, we can't say that, but they want us to say, tell people about their property right. Okay, anymore? All right, I guess we'll close this session.
Yes, you'll close the meeting of the local planning agency and then reconvene the meeting of the county commissioners.
We're gonna close the meeting of the local planning session and open back, now the regular meeting of the county commission and not back in session.
All right. Mr. Chairman, this is the second and final public hearing on a proposed Franklin County ordinance, which is captioned as follows. "An ordinance of Franklin County, Florida, amending the St. George Island corridor overlay district by removing the prohibition against single-family residential uses on the first floor for property located within a 2,100-foot radius of the center point of the intersection of Franklin Boulevard and Gulf Beach Drive on St. George Island, Florida, as described in Plan Book 2, Page 7, Franklin County, Florida, excluding the area east of the east boundary of Third Street East and west of the west boundary of Third Street West, providing for exemptions, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date." And, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would request that you call for public comment.
Public comment?
Hello? Me again. Stephen Rash. Like I said, I own 17, I think 17 lots, including the Blue Parrot Restaurant on the beach on St. George Island. And back in early 2000s, there used to be a restaurant next to us named Finney's Restaurant. And at some point, the owners of the property and the restaurant operator decided to close the restaurant, and they put up four, for the shotgun houses there. We, Blue Parrot didn't, the Blue Parrot's still there. I don't have any plans on putting up any residences anywhere on St. George Island or especially the business district. In fact, the lots that I own that could be developed, you know, my plan is hopefully one day to do some type of mixed use with business downstairs and residents upstairs. But right now, my lots are Zone C4, and, you know, we just had a category five hurricane brush by us not long ago. Something could happen, some disaster, who knows what could happen in the future, and just to have the option that I could sell my property with C4 zoning, with a residential component, adds value to my property and adds options that I don't want to give up. You know, I'm not going to give up unless, unless there's a legal grounds for the county to take it from me. So, you know, again, I don't have any plans to do that, and, you know, I don't know if you're discussing, you know, you can put, you can just quit issuing C4. There's, he said, there's 200 and something lots there that are not Zone C4. You can quit issuing C4. I mean, that's a good, good way of looking at it, just quit issuing C4 and don't, don't grant any more C4. But again, my lots are C4, and I want them to stay C4. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
Hi, I'm Julie Crons again, resident business owner on the island. While I respect the fact that someone has bought property on the island and they own it, that's one person, and I respect the fact that he has no plans at this time to do, to build a residential home. That's no guarantee. What we're asking is a guarantee, and right now, you have an overlay that's going to prevent that. It's there, you don't even have to vote, you can vote this down, there'll never be another residential built there. Although I agree with you that we can grandfather in the ones that are existing. Imagine this country if we weren't able to rezone, right? If a government couldn't rezone, where did it start 30 years ago? We really don't need... We really don't need 400 houses, even if somebody says, I don't plan on building there. That's no guarantee, that he can, he could do it tomorrow. If you, if you pass this and say, I can put residential housing there, you're not gonna be able to stop him from doing that, and that's what we're asking. We're asking for you to preserve what we have. Don't do this for one person, don't do this for two people, do this for the county, do this for Franklin County. And if every person threatened to sue you because you were gonna do your job as our county commissioners, then we would never be able to get anything passed in this county. Because everybody could just stand up here and say, well, I'm gonna consult my attorney, I'm gonna consult my attorney. But you have the power, that's what you can do, you, he, nobody's got a leg to stand on, you can do zoning. That's one of your primary jobs is to preserve our county and to preserve our environment, and that's what we're asking for. Do this for the county, don't let 400 houses potentially go up in the middle of that business district, it'd be devastating. Thank you.
Public comment?
Angela Troy again. Commissioner Bolt.
Yes, ma'am.
While you were saying that you wanted to try and reduce and just keep it to the residents, and the other, I'm one of the property owners on the bay that I have not built a home on yet, and I'm surrounded by homes. If you take away my rights to that property, I can build nothing on that property. I paid $250,000 for that property. Somebody will have to pay me for that because I have gotten zero use for that property. And I know there are lots of other C4 people who will feel that same way. And we are simply asking, if we had C4 before, we wanna keep it the way it is, to remove this prohibition and deal with the C2s as they are or anyone else, because it is not fair to take away, and there's several property owners that will not long, no longer be able to build on their property at all.
Thank you. Public comment?
Again, John Cadrelle, actually, I'm speaking as a business owner. I plan on opening up future businesses, hopefully on St. George Island, possibly restaurants. A community cannot thrive without a business district. You push a business district out, no matter C4, C3, C2, no homes are gonna make relevance when nobody wants to buy these homes or these properties, because there's no businesses there for them to go to out of their homes. You need a bank, you need a grocery store, you need a restaurant, you need all these. When one of the ordinance is stating of, of parking issues, when all you four hundred and something homes get put beside my restaurant and beside that restaurant and beside that gas station, where are they gonna park? I'm not gonna go eat at the beach pit, I've gotta go too far. I don't really wanna drive all the way to St. Appalachia Cola just to go get a loaf of bread. So these homes that we are talking about to be built within their ten, fifteen, twenty years down the line, it's not gonna even matter if there's no place for these local residents, it's not even local residents, the majority of these homes that are on the island are rental homes. It's not like a day-to-day person that needs to go to the grocery store whenever they can or have the ability to come across the island to go to the Piggly Wiggly here in Appalachia Cola. When you have vacationers that are renting these so-called homes that could possibly be built in the future, they're not gonna wanna rent these homes because I can't, I can't just go down the street and go to a restaurant, or I can't go fill my gas up really quick down the street, I have to go fifteen, twenty miles to do so. And that's in the future, it's going to hurt the aesthetics of that island, the business portion of that island. And again, these homes are gonna matter. Go into the middle of a country, build 400 homes with no gas station, no restaurant, see how that community is gonna thrive. That's all I gotta say, thank you.
Thank you. Public comments?
One more. I'm Patty Baumann, I'm resident of St. George Island. Can somebody tell me where you're gonna build 400 houses in the business district? It's already built, there are, there are businesses, there are houses, there's a few lots here, a few lots there. If you've got a single lot, I don't know that you can build a house on it anymore. You used to be able on a 25-foot lot, I don't know that you can anymore, you've got different requirements. I know that the skinny minis have several lots that are drain fields, they're not buildable. I think we need to do the right thing by leaving those who are already built and have residential, leave them alone, leave them the way that they were built, and do another overlay if you're not happy. There's not 400 buildable lots, there's not gonna be 400 houses, there's panic in this room. So please, do away with the overlay and put us back whole the way that we were when we bought the property, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm Pat O'Connell again, Michael kept telling me, shut up, but I have to understand this. Michael Schuler says there are nearly 300 C4 lots that are vacant. That's 300 C4 lots that could be built as houses. If they're zone C4 and you leave that in there, they can be built as houses. There are already nearly a hundred houses that are already there, counting the skinny minis and the 70 acres, that's where the 400 came up with. So even if you don't get to 400, 300 in 70 acres is way more density than you have ever done. This is the part of the county that is a major economic driver. The businesses bring more money to the county than a rental property does, you've heard all that data. If we're wrong, if you can carve out and say, out of this ordinance, we're gonna exempt C4, but we're not going to exempt these portions of C2, if those property rights are more important, if it's a rental home than they are for the business, then help us understand that, because it doesn't make sense the way we read it. So, thank you, and I will shut up.
Thank you. Public comments?
Jim Waddell, Lenovoi Consulting Group, 2015 Center Point Boulevard, Tallahassee, Florida. Sitting, sitting here, just more than listening to the various concerned folks, residents and business owners, strikes me that what's on the, what's on the table today doesn't take away any of the issues that are at the core of what we've talked, been talking about through these public hearings. And that is, regardless of whether residential is allowed on the first floor or not, you still have the problems with the parking, the stormwater, the sewer, the green space, and, and, and those things that are, that have been in your code for years. So, with all due respect to the folks that would like to see this prohibition remain, I'm afraid that they're gonna get exactly what they're hoping not to see if you don't, if, if the board does not take favorable action today. And that is, someone will, will, someone with enough money, if the market bears it, will buy those lots, they'll create a unity of title, they'll build a single large building, and these view sheds and aesthetic that, that arguably is more Panama City Beach than it is St. George Island Village is gonna go away. My client, who lives at 112 Gorey Drive, his house is not in the rental market, it's a private residence, it has been, been that way since they owned it. All they are simply asking to do is to, is for them to have the ability to rebuild if their home is destroyed under the conditions of the C4 district that existed when they bought it, which is much the same case as some of the other folks in this room have, are, that's all they're asking, that's all my client is asking. So whether you apply moral or ethical or legal or whatever compass you wanna apply to this, apply the one of common sense, and what is the right thing to do. And that is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Public comment? Public comment, Mr. Schuler, the public comment.
Over. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, the board is in a procedural position to have whatever discussions that you wish among yourselves or questions you wish to direct to myself. If there is no discussion and there are no questions, you're in a position where you can make a decision to either approve or reject the ordinance as written, keeping in mind that my recommendation and Mr. Carrington's recommendation is that the board adopt the ordinance as written, which would remove the prohibition of residential uses on the first floor throughout the entire business district that we have discussed it here today, approximately 302 units, of which about 50 of those units have been constructed. The board certainly has the authority and the flexibility, if you wanted to do some lesser amount of lots and the grandfathering that we've talked about, that is also within the discretion of the board.
Over discussion? Discussion?
Can we put that color map back up again?
Sure, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
First, I'd like to make a couple of clarifying statements. There's not any discussion today, good, bad, or indifferent, about how dense it is and about these, the fact that there's a 25-foot lots, that's, that's substantially not gonna change, period. So if you're looking at potentially 300 residences or at, as we could call them, businesses, if they're rental houses, I mean, it's perpetuated all over St. George Island, and are businesses, it's still the same number of lots, so that, that, I mean, you know, good, bad, or indifferent, that, that does not change. I would like to say that I, now, I'm kinda caught in the middle, I understand what's going on, but also understand that there's people that are currently living in their properties that can't get insurance because of where they are. So, I mean, there's, we definitely need to take an action today, we don't need to just, you know, throw off and act like it's not important. There's individual property rights, there's what the business, community as a whole wants to see, you know, I think we need to try to find a way to strike a balance if it's possible, but that's just my thought.
You think we can just give relief specifically to the addresses in the lower right-hand corner, in that blue section, and work with that only? Which I think is what triggered this whole thing to begin with, so that those people have purely residential uses. And that's it, right there.
But, but if you do, Commissioner Bolt, you have people on Gorey Drive, north and south, you have people up on Gun Street that have C4 property that already have houses around them, you know what I mean, so you're, you're telling them they gotta put a business in the middle of all those houses and tell them all the, all the businesses, you won't put no houses where they are, you know what I mean, so it's a, that's an issue.
You know, it is what it is. The business, all this with them, when they bought their lot. When they, when he bought these lots, all this with them, the businesses, the houses, they know the zoning. It ain't like this, this coming up new. And every time a commissioner, I mean, they get a chance with some new commissioner, they wanna come here and flip it around. The law is the law. What, thirty years from now, ten years from now, it's gonna be a change. What we supposed to do, okay, I guess commissioners say, well, we ain't letting nobody buy us by on the, on the island. We can't do that. When the people buy on the island, they sell the lot, they know what the zoning is, I mean. When you buy in an era like that, you check it out real good, you don't go in there and just buy. You done checked it out, you know the zoning, you know where the downtown, the uptown, the lower town, the good part, the bad part. You know where the cheap part, you know where the high part. But don't come in here and tell, but it's not right to tell somebody, but hey, I, these people bought their property. A lady get up there, she said she paid $250,000, and you gonna tell her what she can't do with it? But you won't be a you big restaurant, big multi, big whatever, in the business, district business. It's all right for that, but it ain't all right for her. Let's get real here now, the county, county better have some money if they don't vote right on it. Any more commissioner comment?
Do you think there's any other counties around Florida that's had this kind of dilemma in how they handled something like this? Or is this very unique?
They went by the book. That's what they done, they went by the book, didn't they? That, this place gonna grow, they can forget about that, I mean, sooner or later, it's gonna grow. It don't matter where you, you put it on hold. You can't put nothing on hold, it's gonna grow, it's coming. That, I, I was looking at this, I'm, how, you can't see. Well, go down the road and look in the water, you can see it in. Or come up the road, you can't go up in there, we got a, a height restriction. But if you ride down the road, you can look at the water, if you ride up the road, you can look down at the water. It ain't what you seen 25, 30 years ago, I went over there when they, you had to go on the fair, wasn't nothing over there, you can see all the water you want. People bought it and they expect to do something with it.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Mr. Schuler, let me ask you something, if, if, if somebody wanted to rezone their property, what's the procedure for that? They have to come to the board and ask for RCO's planning, it has to be rezoned, right?
Correct, yes.
How many people out of this 302 lots of C4 has come and asked to be rezoned or something else?
I'd say none.
All right, so how does a county just step in and say, okay, we're gonna rezone your property? How about if we take some of these R1 residents and, and rezone them to commercial? That ain't gonna fly, is it? That ain't gonna fly, is it? If the county just arbitrarily steps in and says, okay, you're not in a R1 district no more, we're gonna take away your zoning. That ain't gonna fly, ain't gonna happen, the judge ain't gonna let that happen. So ain't that what we're basically looking at now, is trying to arbitrarily take away the C4 zoning from these people that were granting C4 zoning 15 or 20 years ago? Wasn't even done by this board. But how do you arbitrarily just step in and say, we're gonna rezone your property for you, whether you request it or not? How's that work?
Well, we're not rezoning their property, you, technically, you were just changing and did, in fact, change some of the allowable uses within an overlay district for a specific geographic area. So, as I said, and I, when I prefaced my opening statement, I'm trying not to get into the legal arguments that, that can properly be raised to defend the county's action, I'm responding to a policy issue that the board had presented to it. I'm responding to a policy issue that the board had presented to it, and the board directed me to draft an ordinance and bring it back to the board in a public setting, so you would have the opportunity to make a policy decision. So I think there are, in my mind, as the attorney, what legal arguments can I make? Yes, there are legal arguments that can be made to defend the county's actions in the overlay without question. But what I'm responding to with this ordinance is a policy issue that was, again, brought to the attention of this board by constituents of this board, and then directions to me to schedule this public hearing. So I don't want to get into the...
I understand, but I'm just trying to make a point.
That's why I was sitting here quietly, but after the third call for a response, I had to give a response.
I don't want somebody to come to my place and tell me I can't live there no more. We're going to rezonate your property. You're not in R-1 no more, you're industrial. Come on now, you can't do that. I mean, it don't make no sense. I didn't grant all these C-four. This sitting board didn't grant all those C-four. We're stuck with the issue of having to deal with it, but we didn't grant this. And listening to some of the public, it makes it sound like that we granted it, and now we want to, you know, protect that, but that ain't what... We didn't grant none of this. Or, I don't know if Mr. Likely was here, I know the other four of us wasn't here, but we've inherited the issue, and we got to deal with it, you know?
I was him on some of it, but most of it was already done. I was on plan and zoning when all this was done. So I know how it came to pass. And you still got two-hundred-and-seventy lots there that ain't been nothing done with in the last fifteen, eighteen years. It's still zoning C-four, but there ain't been nothing done. Because you still have that commercial use, you have a mixed use, or you do have residential. That is up to the property owner. So you've heard today that every one of them's going to be residential. Well, I ain't done nothing in eighteen years. They've been C-four, but nobody's went up and built stacks and stacks of shotgun houses. That kind of tells me that that really ain't what they wanted to. If they did, that'd have been like the other seventy and already built out. And that's kind of my take on the whole situation.
In kind of caring what you just said, maybe we might consider just leaving everything alone and allow individual property owners to come one-on-one, asking for a rezoning to get relief, maybe in insurance issues and that type of thing. Not really?
Commissioner Bolt, Mr. Chairman, if I may respond, that rezoning is not possible to solve the issue that I... As I understand what you're describing, Commissioner Bolt, a rezoning request in the future on an individual basis would not solve the issue, because right now, the issue is that, and I'm not referring to all the issues we've heard here today, but the issue in this ordinance is not limited to removing the prohibition of residential use on the first floor of C-four zoned properties. So if the ordinance stays in effect as it is presently written, the board would not have the authority to grant a variance or a special exception to the ordinance. To quote Commissioner or Chairman Likely, the law is the law, and you must follow it as well as everyone else. When I say you, I don't mean you, Commissioner, I mean the commission as a whole. I mean, that's part of your constitutional duties, is to protect and defend the constitution and the laws of the state of Florida, including local ordinances.
What going to be the difference in the property drop on them people?
Well, you don't know, because you got the ability to do a residence, you got the ability to do a mixed use, or you got the ability to do straight commercial. So you don't, it's hard to figure out what the devaluation would be.
They going to lose big thing.
Well, I don't know. If a big man comes in here and wants to give them a million dollars a lot, then they'll make money. But I ain't seen nobody do it in the last eighteen years. That's why they all still sitting there.
Mr. Schuler said that they supposed to stop living the top, then some of them said they want to stop skinny minis altogether.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, Commissioner Masser.
They wanted to stop from building residential on top of a business. But why here, they don't want the skinny minis build a tall.
Yeah, well, that precedent has long been set, thirty years ago almost.
How long it's been, thirty years ago?
Roughly, yes, sir. Slightly less, but...
When they started building them?
That, as we said, that on the bottom right-hand side, that blue block, those were the units that were originally built as a result of the court case from the late eighties and early nineties.
We going to be back in code again, they don't do that. You know, I guess next they'll be saying, we ain't letting nobody else move over here. Got the next move? I don't know. Well, I don't need talking about, we got to make a decision.
Yeah, we got to make a decision.
Pleasure to the boat. Pleasure to the boat.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Turner Schuler, one of these options, does it lays out to try to grandfather in around Gory and Gunn and go forward? Is that one of the options in front of us?
I'm not sure what you mean by Gory and Gunn, but the option that the board would have as a fallback is if you don't want to approve or deny the ordinance as it's written, then you do have the authority, I believe, to just grandfather in what we've referred to as the constructed C-four residential units. And there's approximately fifty of those that I'm aware of, based on the map that Mr. Carrington provided.
But not any unconstructed? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm hearing you say the...
No, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Oh, no, the ordinance as written is for all three hundred and two C-four zoned units, whether they're built or unbuilt. That's the way the ordinance is presented and recommended. It would essentially reset all of the C-four zoned properties to the various development rights that they had prior to ordinance, two thousand and eighteen, too, which is the St. George Island Overlay District Ordinance.
Well, I'm second time at this, I'm trying to avoid any more unintended consequences with this overlay.
Yes, sir.
So that's why I'm trying to ask a question to qualify what we're doing. Because looking at the map, we already have residences north and south of Gory to the west, south of Gory to the east, and then there's residences on north of Gun Street. That's what I'm referring to. So is that one of the options in front of us?
To just exempt the as-built units?
No, to just exempt the areas I just described. Does it need to be an all-or-nothing thing, is what I'm trying to clarify?
I'm thinking through what you're essentially saying is have the block... You talking about exempting all of the C-four in this line of blocks?
Gun Street does not go to the west, it only goes to the east.
Here?
Yep.
And then all of these here?
Yep.
In this area, this entire block here?
And south.
And here.
Yep.
What if that, but it would exclude this area?
It would. But that's part of a planned unit development, wasn't it? The red area? Wasn't that something they did as a PUD?
Right, that was a lot, lot line reconfiguration is what that was. I don't think it was a PUD.
But there, but going back to the west of that red area, there's nobody, nobody potentially in those, in that rest of that block, that we'd be adversely affected by having a place that's C-four, then a house already, and then another place C-four, another house, is what I'm getting at. These other areas already have residences there.
I'm thinking live, just let me think about it.
It's all good, I'm not in a hurry, we've been here all day. Probably going to be here a lot longer. Again, but let me clarify, my question is, I don't want to have any more unintended consequences from the actions we take today.
I don't know how you're going to do that.
Listen, I would...
With all these lots scattered all in there, there may be lawsuits, and who knows what else has an unintended consequence that we don't even know about to be considered.
Well, if I could predict the future, I'd be buying Lotto tickets every week and always win. But, no, I think that if you're asking me for a recommendation, my recommendation would be not to separate out all of the units, in the sense that you said, Commissioner Jones, I can see where there's an argument to be made for grandfathering the as-built units, but I'm not sure that I'm immediately seeing the argument where we would allow some of the vacant C-four to be allowed to develop as the old C-four with the residential component on the first floor, then the C-four on the interior not. Again, we're talking live here. If the issue was limited to, well, there's a difference for waterfront or water view, for example, this area up here, I can see there's an argument that could be made that those units are different than interior units, but then we're also talking about this area, which doesn't qualify for that same argument.
So I had a man that called me yesterday, said he'd bought, I don't know, he got two or three lots in there somewhere. He said he wanted to build and build his, you know, his house above, because he didn't have enough money to build out around on his business that he hasn't built. You know, because he seen what's going on here.
Right, and that is part of the impetus for having this discussion to begin with, is some lot owners came to the county and said, well, if I have to rebuild a destroyed structure under the new ordinance, or I want to have new construction under the new overlay ordinance, some of them would not be able to meet the current parking requirements and all the other requirements that are required in order to build or rebuild. That was part of what led us to where we are today, having this discussion.
Well, if you wanted, if you had a vacant lot in a commercial district, and you want to do a business and a residence above, mixed use, does that business have to be elevated?
Yeah, you have to meet...
You have to meet FEMA requirements.
Have to meet FEMA requirements.
So there'll be no more building on the ground regardless.
That's right.
There won't be another Harry Hayes and all that built at grade, because you have to be elevated.
They'll have to meet the FEMA requirements, and we'd have to get Ms. Kelly in here.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on your elevation, as to how much you got to be elevated. Depends on your current elevation, your grade. I understand all that, but...
But even for a commercial structure, there's a waterproofing, as Ms. Kelly has explained to me, for ground level. So, you know, it would just have, that determination on FEMA requirements would have to be made on a case-by-case basis. Whether people could afford the waterproofing and still make a return on their investment, different question. I got...
As far as the FEMA rights, we can stop that, we can vote on dropping that port level down to a certain amount, to one percent or one whatever, but we only want in Florida that's ten ports. We can go down to one port, and they can rebuild at twenty percent or whatever. That's why it's holding us up on the rebuilding part of it.
Again, that's a question for Ms. Kelly, she's your...
And that's our right up here for five commissioners to get it down where people can build, because there's houses in my district, there's sixty percent damage, but they can't rebuild them because of the port level. And it, I mean, it's crazy to me.
Well, when you reduce that, you're raising the insurance costs, too.
Yeah, but there's not many people in Franklin County got flood insurance.
Well, again, Ms. Kelly would need to better answer that question, Commissioner Masser, but I think the way the FEMA works is, to the extent that you're in compliance or you even have some, as you recall, some people have come to the board and they've gone higher than their minimum elevation in order to get greater discounts on their flood insurance. But I think that the percentage that you're talking about has to do with, to the extent you're in compliance with the FEMA requirements, gives you the discount on the insurance premiums, and to the extent you're not in compliance, you go lower and lower on the percentage.
Right, I understand all that, and I've been researching it, it's not a whole lot of people in Franklin County has flood insurance. I mean, there's a very few, you know, account of the price of it, and it was one way or the other, on the port level. We hurt them on that side, plus that side, I mean, you know?
They always told me in the beginning, God made the perfect world, but when you go to change, it ain't going to do right.
That's what I always said about the river, the water war. They build all them reservoirs, they change the flow of the river.
Well, we need to do something.
I'd like to know how you guys want to get through this, because, and I'm not trying to put it on everybody else, but it's a board decision. I know there's current residents there, we cannot just try to overlook them. This, as an unintended consequences, this overlay created a problem for them. There's also neighbors in between some of those houses that have C-four property, so if you just try to grandfather, you're telling the rest of them that it doesn't matter. So I haven't been as long as some of you, so what do you think?
You want me to make a motion?
I don't know, I don't know what to do, because you can't just leave them out when they've got houses on either side of them. And if you just grandfather what's already built, you're leaving people out.
I know like the little young lady said, she paid two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for a lot of the cut one side, she never going to go to use it.
But the house is all around them.
Yeah.
On both sides.
Yeah, I want to help everybody, I want to fix it, whatever needs to be fixed.
You think with all the information we've talked about and the public statements we've heard, do you think it's appropriate to bring in a professional consultant that's worked with this before to give us some direction?
No, we the professionals.
We are, we don't need all that.
We the professionals.
We'll be dragged out two or three, four months.
No.
I understand. It's just so complex, is it?
Put us in help.
That's all.
Well, there's just no way we're going to make everybody happy.
This is the decision here, you're going to have to make a decision. Some lot going to be happy, some is.
I ain't going to never make everybody happy.
Because we got one that's coming up at one-thirty.
Yep.
It's in your district, it's not going to be good either.
Yep.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt, that we adopt option one, which allows the C-four zoned property owners to maintain that property. And also in that motion is to, if this passes, that we do not allow any further C-four zoning within the commercial district on St. George Island within the overlay.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Paris.
Mr. Chairman, I have a clarifying question, if I might.
Go ahead, sir.
The C-four zoning prohibition, is that a part of your motion to adopt the ordinance as written? Because I don't think we can do that in this public setting. I mean, we haven't advertised...
Okay, skip that. My motion will be for option one, to allow C-four lots that was on C-four before they overlaid to maintain their zoning category.
That's to adopt the ordinance as written and recommended. Okay, thank you.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Paris. I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Paris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Masser. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I oppose.
That passed the vote of one with Commissioner...
All right, Mr. Chairman, that concludes this public hearing. There is a second public hearing scheduled on a parking ordinance. This ordinance would prohibit overnight parking in various public places. Do you want to take a five-minute recess and then come back and address that ordinance, or do y'all want to table it and reschedule it for a different time?
We want to do that before lunch. I'm doing that for lunch.
We got one at one-thirty, right?
Yes. Yes. I don't think this next ordinance will take very long.
Okay. We back for another public hearing.
That is correct. Mr. Chairman, if I may proceed?
Yes, sir.
All right. Commissioners, this is a public hearing. It is the first and only public hearing that you will have to consider this ordinance, and you're in a procedural position to make a decision today. Um, the caption of the ordinance is as follows. An ordinance of Franklin County, Florida prohibiting the parking or leaving of motor vehicles, trailers, or recreational vehicle-type units on public property in unincorporated Franklin County overnight, providing for towing at owner's expense, providing for enforcement by the sheriff, providing for penalties, providing for repeal, providing severability, and an effective date. This is an ordinance that applies to all public property within unincorporated Franklin County, which is designated as a public park, a boat ramp, or fishing pier, including but not necessarily, limited to, and I've, I've listed out a number of different public facilities there, ranging from Applejackola in the west to Alligator Point on the east. The definitional section, just so the board and the public will know, motor vehicles are defined, uh, as provided in Florida statutes at section three twenty point oh one, and generally refers to automobiles, motorcycles, trucks, trailers, semi-trailers, truck tractors, and semi-trailer combinations, or any other vehicle operated on the roads of the state of Florida. Uh, recreational vehicle-type units are also defined in Florida statutes at section three twenty point oh one, uh, and, uh, include as general matters, travel trailers, camping trailers, truck campers, motor homes, private motor coaches, van conversions, parked trailers, and fifth-wheel trailers. The prohibition for trailer is also provided in the same Florida statute, section three twenty point oh one. And it's essentially, uh, it is any vehicle which is coupled to or drawn by a motor vehicle and constructed so that no part of its weight or that of its load rests upon the towing vehicle. Uh, and I need some, uh, assistance and request guidance from the board on the definition of overnight. Uh, in the ordinance, I have generally referred to overnight as being that time period beginning daily at nine PM Eastern Time and ending at five AM, uh, Eastern Time the next day. The reason I put that time period in there is a lot of people are using these, these boat ramps and parking areas, um, either, you know, early in the morning to go fishing, or they're coming back from fishing late in the afternoon. Sometimes in the summertime, it doesn't even get dark until close to, uh, nine PM anyway. As you had heard, I believe Commissioner Parrish had mentioned earlier, around eight thirty, nine o'clock with the time change. So if there's any guidance that the board has in, in helping, you know, define a different period of time as overnight, that, that's, uh, perfectly acceptable. That is your authority, but that is the, the suggested time period that I have for the definition of overnight. Uh, the penalty, in addition to towing, uh, is, is going, will be a non-criminal violation as defined in, in Florida statute seven seventy-five point zero eight, uh, with the exception that if, on the second violation, there's any injury to a person or property, then it would become a second-degree criminal misdemeanor, uh, which is punishable by up to sixty days in jail and or five hundred dollar fine. The, on the towing issue, one, or the towing provision, one, one thing that, that although it's not stated in the ordinance, one thing that the board would have to do if you adopt this is we would have to put a signage at each one of these facilities, notify the public, uh, that, you know, this is the company that will be towing your vehicle, and this is, you know, how you get in contact with them to get your vehicle back. But that is the presentation I have for the board and the public. And does the board have any, uh, questions for me before you proceed to public comment?
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So all that's fine, as far as I understand it, but I would ask, any signage we do, that you would do, sign for like this area is not, you know, overnight, whatever ordinance, but anything you do referencing who's gonna be doing the towing, needs to be a separate sign on the bottom?
Yes.
So if somebody goes in business, out of business, we can change the little sign, not the whole sign. You know what I mean? That's, I think that would be better.
Very good point.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I got one, uh, question, uh, Ms. Schuler.
Yes, sir.
When you're referring to trailers and motor vehicles, that does not, that it, that excludes a fisherman? That might be mullet fishing at night, might be floundering at night?
It does not.
Okay, well, that, that needs to be included in this ordinance. That, that, a fishing vessel. My concern was motor home, trailer, camper, these are the ones that I didn't want to stay in there overnight, overnight camping. We cannot limit the use of these boat ramps for these floundermen or mullet fishermen. You know, stuff, I want them to have the ability to launch and go make a living at night. But I don't want the people camping overnight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sleeping in their cars, we don't want that either.
I don't, I don't know how you would word that, but, you know, if man's pulling a trailer behind him, launching his boat, he's gone fishing at night, I don't want him to come home and his vehicle be towed away.
Yep.
Other than that, I'm good with all of this.
Right, right. Well, and that's kind of the issue we ran into with the old parking ordinance, is it, it did contain that type of, like, the exception to the rule. So you had a bright line rule, then you have an exception. And then, on an enforcement side, I, I, one of the problems I think that was run into is everybody says they're either going floundering, or they're going mullet fishing, or-
Well, if they're going floundering, they gotta have a boat behind them.
Or they're waiting. I mean, there, there's all kinds of-
Very, very few people waiting.
I understand, but that, that, that's the issue. I mean, I will do as the board instructs and we'll, we'll put that exception in there, but just understand it, 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 it created some issues in the past, but I understand with our fishing heritage and, you know, our, our community, that, that is something that we need to take into consideration.
Sir.
Well, maybe, Mr. Chairman, maybe you want to redraft it, I guess, and bring it back to us. No overnight camping, prohibited tents, motor homes, camper trailers, you know, and it-
Okay.
And leave the people that's trying to fish for a living. You know, orson sometime, they go out at six thirty in the morning, launch their boat, and just idle around till daylight, then run on out and go orson or whatever. They gotta, we gotta have that ability. We can't, can't restrict the, the boat ramps and the parking areas to somebody out there trying to make a bonafide living on the water. That's gonna be huge. I mean, you're talking about the room filling up and Facebook blowing up and all that other stuff. I mean, we gotta have that, so.
Okay.
Whatever you have to do to redraft this thing, I'm gonna make a motion that we table till it's redrafted and brought back to, uh, for consideration of the board.
I'm gonna second that motion, and I would like to hear some discussion.
I second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish to, uh, table the public hearing to be redrafted or rewrite it. And then second by two of, uh, Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Burke. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I want to make sure, turn sure that when we finish with the product, that it's a clear intent for anybody that's trying to enforce it, that this, this is what we're after.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
We're not trying to include any activity on a parking area, you know what I'm saying? But we're definitely after this that we see that's happening that does not need to continue taking place.
Mr. Chairman, also preventing the, uh, construction of fires on these public grounds. Because if it's not included in this ordinance, then the sheriff can't enforce it.
Well, they've had them in recent years over on the island by the lighthouse park, trying to create a fire.
Appleton too.
Out, out in the middle of that parking lot.
Pallets and burning, and you leave all the nails after they burnt the fire.
Yeah.
So we also need to include the prohibition against-
We're making your job harder.
Well, I just want to bring to the board's attention that I can put the prohibition in there, but the next thing you're going to hear is, well, um, because we ran into this with the last ordinance. I'm commercial fishing, I'm crabbing, I'm floundering, I'm, I'm mullet fishing. In the wintertime, it's cold. I need a warming fire. So.
Not on public parks.
Not on public parks.
Not on public.
Parks.
Parks, all these parks you listed here.
Okay.
Now, if they on the beach somewhere, that's different. That's their own issue.
Yeah.
But not burn them on, in public.
So I'm gonna, before we vote, since we putting this off, I'm gonna give some public comment to, I, I seen a couple of people had their hand up since we putting it off.
Sure. Well, we need to get all the comments, so when we come back, we're ready.
Public comment?
Angela Troy and my husband Larry Troy. We own Island Outfitters. And I appreciate you about the flounder, because I did have a customer call me right before this, was concerned they flounder out of kayak. They don't have a trailer. They just put it in the back of their truck. So whatever we, I'm not sure how to add to that, but just to make sure that she will be at night. She's a lady that does flounder at night. And like I said, she doesn't necessarily have a trailer, so they just want to make sure that whatever wording that is included in that, if can be, to concern people that are just kayaking that don't have trailers as well.
Well, maybe, she work for you?
No, she's a customer.
She's a customer?
She's a customer of mine.
Well, maybe it'll be-
Well, the point I was getting at is they're not, you could tell if people are fishing and they have a boat trailer behind them, but she's not necessarily gonna have a trailer.
No, I'm, I'm-
A little sticker that says your customers flounder, it's a thick over windshield or over, you know.
If she got a statement from you or a written statement.
Or is there something that can be directed to the sheriff's department to say, I know the nine PM to five AM, but I know in a lot of public parking in other big cities, they'll mark the tires and come back. And if it's, you know, they mark it again, I mean, chances are she's not gonna be out from nine till five the whole time, but I don't know. That's something to consider.
Okay.
I would think if the, if what we come back to has a clear intent that we're trying to do away with people camping in public places.
And I agree with that.
You know what I mean? I, I think that's gonna alleviate a lot of that, because you, you go to a vehicle and it's sitting there, it's empty, well, they're not camping, that's just a vehicle there.
Right.
Right. If they're camping, they're gonna be sleeping or in it, or, you know what I mean?
I agree. I agree.
Especially at those hours.
Yes.
What we trying to do is get rid of the lottery, man.
Lottery.
Yeah.
Yes.
Send people gas, have the gas tank where they out fishing or floundering. People camp there, and if you don't see them do it, then, you know, that's, that's the issue we can have.
Oh, yeah. No, I agree with that.
Is camping on this public. I know you, Saint George Island, at the park, public parking area there, no pack, there's gonna be no camping overnight there either, right? Yeah, I mean, so that's what we're looking at, is the camping issue. Because people come from all over and they want to camp by the water. But they're using the public's boat ramp, water access.
Restaurant.
But then people come in from floundering, the truck won't crank because ain't no gas in it. So that's what brought all this up. Because they're not only camping, they're trying to get gas to move on in the morning.
Right. No, I mean, I agree. I, I fully agree that the camping should be prohibited, but just to be aware that some people aren't necessarily pulling trailers.
Yeah, we, it's not our intent to stop nobody from working.
Right.
We'll, we wanna, we wanna help them work.
This is pleasure. She's not working, but she's fishing.
I understand.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to get a specific date, time, uh, and location for the, this continuation of this public hearing. He's getting me the, the, April seventh?
April.
Commissioner Parrish, if you would modify your motion to, uh, table this matter until April seventh at eleven AM?
Um, motion is so amended.
I'll amend my second.
Okay. So we've been eleven?
April the seventh at eleven AM.
So we've been put off to April the seventh at eleven, eleven o'clock in the morning. Is that the same day of meeting, right?
Yep.
Yes, that's, that's our first meeting in April. I will also, uh, as I've done for the other continuation meetings, I will also put another ad in the paper to notify the public.
Okay. So I guess there's no more public comment. We're gonna- All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous. This concludes the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
We come back again.
Yeah, this recess to county commission will reconvene at one thirty.
Okay. The commission, Franklin County Board of County Commissioners out of session, we'll be back at one thirty.
One thirty.
One thirty gonna be over long enough?
Did you order a lunch?